Okay. Thanks for everyone. What's your order? All right.
Okay, thanks. Please be seated, everyone. This calls to order the 11th meeting of City Council on June 4th, 2024. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Yanashnabak, Hodnashoni, Lenny Pewalk and Atawandron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area. The Two-Row Wampa Bell Treaty of the Hodnashoni Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Hodnashoni-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, McKay Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Yanashnabak, and the Dish With One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Yanashnabak and Hodnashoni. Three Indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chippewas, the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, you can contact us at councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. With that, I'm delighted to introduce our Oh Canada singer for today. Laura MB is an independent Colombian singer-songwriter now based in London, Ontario. Seamlessly blending Latin pop, alternative pop and indie genres, Laura aims to create music that comes from the true authenticity that has the power to inspire and connect people. Passionate about the art of songwriting, she uses the power of words, poetry and flow to tell stories that represents life's experiences and emotions. Laura will also be one of the featured artists at the London Major's Anthem programming this year, so you can catch her singing the anthem at a ballgame this summer. The London Music Office is also proud to announce that London has been nominated this year as the Canadian Live Music Industry Awards for the Music City of the Year. Please rise and join me in welcoming Laura, who will now be singing the national anthem for us.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us come here. With glowing hearts, we see the rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, we'll start with disclosures of pecuniary interest. All right, seeing none. I have a recognition at the podium, and then there are several other recognitions that councillors will do, so I'll just move to the podium for the planned one on the regular agenda. All right, well, today is always an exciting day each and every year when we get to announce the award winner of the Tim Hickman Scholarship. The Tim Hickman Memorial Health and Safety Scholarship is an opportunity to raise awareness of workplace safety in our community. The annual scholarship is awarded to a student in an occupational health or public health and safety-related program. It was established in 2006 as a tribute to Tim Hickman, a young man who died in service to his community at age 21. Today, I'm pleased to announce that Lindsay Townsend is the 2024 recipient of this scholarship. Maybe Lindsay, if you want to come out and join me while I say a few words. Lindsay is currently enrolled in the Fire Inspection and Fire Safety Education Advanced Diploma Programme at Vanshaw College. Lindsay has a long-time commitment to protecting the community. She has plenty of experience working as a lifeguard and swim instructor, helping keep our communities, our community pool safe and free of injuries. Once she graduates, Lindsay will want to continue her career in public safety and become a fire prevention officer and fire safety educator. Thank you to Lindsay for the work you're doing now and in the future, and that you will continue to do in the success of your career ahead. It's also important for us to take the opportunity to thank our QP locals, 101 and 107, and of course, the Hickman family, for their continued support of this scholarship over the past 17 years. Please join me in congratulating Lindsay. Now, Lindsay and I had an opportunity to do a big novelty check thing over my office earlier. We decided not to drag it in here, but I assure you she got the actual real check, but I wanted to invite her to maybe say a few words if you'd like.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the City of London and the QP locals for the opportunity to receive this award. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list for recognitions, I have councillor Ferreira.
Thank you, your worship. So I want to take a moment to recognize and celebrate the London Lightning players, coaches and staff on their championship season. So late last month, the London Lightning won their third straight league championship, defeating the Kitchener Waterloo Titan in the first-ever basketball super-league final. Since their inception in 2011, the London Lightning have entertained thousands of Londoners of all backgrounds and all ages, not only on the court, but off the court as well, through countless acts of goodwill and consistent community involvement. So I'd like to say congratulations once again to the players, to the coaches and all those behind the scenes who made this latest triumph possible. Your success is truly towards our city's pride, and we look forward to many more victories. So thank you to the London Lightning.
Thank you, councillor. I have Deputy Mayor Lewis next.
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, the Memorial Cup Trophy was established by Captain James T. Sutherland to honor those who died in service during World War I, and it was rededicated during the 2010 tournament to honor all soldiers who died fighting for Canada in any conflict. And I know that councillor Lehman will be sharing some words about that shortly. But while our London Knights were not successful in their quest to bring the Memorial Cup back to London this year, nonetheless, we should be celebrating the fact that this season, the Knights captured their fifth OHL championship. So 2005, 2012, 2013, 2016, and now again in 2024. And the important contributions that this team makes to us being a city of champions, as we just heard from councillor Ferreira, the Lightning continue to add to cannot be understated. I want to, though, take a moment as well to recognize the important partners and the important work that was done over the last week by Budweiser Gardens, Downtown London, Tourism London, the PA Shop, who is our video and audio provider, and a great War II business, by the way, by Mike Stubbs and Jim Van Horn from CFPL Radio, who, from Saginaw, captured videos that they sent to us to share with the audience at Knights Court from the players, thanking them for their support. And most importantly, I want to thank our city staff. I want to thank Jimmy Anchula and Mike McCauley and Tyler Lucier and their team for the incredible work they did on very short notice to pull together, not a one-day, but a four-day activation of Dundas Place. We had about 150 people for the first game. Despite the wind and the rain on Monday night, we crept over 200. By Wednesday night, in game three, the crowd was over 350. And on Sunday, for the finals, we welcomed about 700 people to Knights Court on Dundas Place. That does not happen without amazing teamwork, and on short notice, I cannot say enough about the good work of everyone involved in making this happen, because this is what we built Dundas Place for. I also want to thank our London Knights fans, who embraced Knights Court, who came downtown to support our team, to support downtown businesses before and after the game, whether they were stopping in for a burger or grabbing a pint after the game, that support matters to those businesses as well. So I want to thank everybody who was involved, and to the Knights players and the coaching staff, I want to say, hold your heads high. Hockey is a game of lucky bounces and inches sometimes, and while the hockey gods did not smile on you in the final minute of the final, nonetheless, you are champions of the Ontario Hockey League for a fifth straight time, and Londoners are proud of you for that.
Councillor Lehman.
Eighty years ago, this Thursday, June 6th, 14,000 young Canadians set across the English Channel with London's own first Hazars leading the way. At the end of that day, D-Day, 1,096 fell, with 381 paying the ultimate sacrifice on the beaches of Normandy. As years go by, fewer and fewer of our veterans of the Greatest Generation are still with us. It is important that we keep their memories alive with recognitions such as this Remembrance Day, with stories passed on to our children, with monuments such as London's own holding roller tank, holding a place of honor in Victoria Park, the last surviving tank that rolled onto those beaches 80 years ago. To remind ourselves constantly that we enjoy the privilege of democracy that we witness in these chambers because of the sacrifice of those brave men and women who came before us.
Thank you, councillors. I have one final recognition. June 6th marks another day of significance for the City of London. Three years ago, this Thursday, is the day that we lost our London family in the horrific murders that occurred within our city, the worst mass murder in our city's history. The trial that pursued was very difficult on the community, and the appeal creates challenges that are raised to the surface once again. The work of different organizations, particularly the youth in the community, to organize annual vigils throughout a very difficult time, has been inspiring. The YCCI, the Youth Coalition to Combat Islamophobia, has been leaders in not only organizing respectful and powerful instances of remembrance, whether it be the vigil or the other activities that they've done, but also inspired a generation of young leaders to be active in their community, to stand up for what they believe in, and to be part of the change that needs to happen. Now, those who are able to join on June 6th, there will once again be a vigil at Hyde Park and South Carriage Road. I would encourage you to turn out. There are a number of members of council, though, who will not be able to be there, including myself, because we are traveling to Calgary for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. In working with YCCI and the organizers, and out of respect for the important significance this has, not only on our community here in London, but a national community heavily impacted by the events of that day, myself and the other councillors going have arranged for a simultaneous vigil that will be occurring in Calgary that will include our delegation as well as representatives from mayors, from the Big City Mayors Caucus at the same time. We will be able to view the live stream of the vigil happening here, but we'll be participating in a simultaneous, respectful ceremony, a moment of remembrance at the same time, while in Calgary, allowing us to continue to have conversations across this country about the challenges of Islamophobia, and continue to discuss the plan that we put together as a council in the aftermath of that. A plan that was shaped by the community, heavily influenced by the discussions and what had occurred here, as well as the systemic and ongoing challenges that we face. A London for All, our plan to combat Islamophobia, is something that has been presented to the FCM's Anti-Racism Committee for, as an example of things that municipalities can do to take real action, and we continue to implement the recommendations within that plan here in the City of London. So once again, it'll be our opportunity to not only, alongside of those here in our city who are remembering in person at the site, to do so at the same time, but also to continue our advocacy and the important discussion across this country about combating Islamophobia in all its forms. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, so we have completed recognitions. We have no matters to review that were done in confidential session to be considered in public, so we move on to the council in closed session. I'll just outline just a small typo in the agenda. 4.3, which says security property, actually relates to 4.1 of the CSC agenda, not 5.1. And for those who need to take a peek at the added agenda, there's also an added item from today's earlier special PEC meeting for our in-camera agenda as well. So we have four reasons on both the regular and added agenda to go into closed session for, so I'll look for someone to move a motion to do so. Councillor Ramon, seconded by councillor Cuddy. Any discussion? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Although yes.
Noted. Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, we'll be moving to committee room five, so I will see all of you there.
It comes up right away.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues.
And with regard to, you know, continuing on emerging best practices, well, I think that that work is always happening. When we start talking about incentive programs and things like that, given the budget constraints we already have and the creation of a new working group, I don't think we're in any position to be offering incentives on things at this point in time. So I will be voting only for part A to receive the staff report and be opposing everything else.
Okay, so it's a further request to break it down, all parts separate. I'm going to suggest A and the "it being noted" to be attached together because I'd like to be able to give people the opportunity to, if there were communications sent, the "it being noted" recognizes that. So now it's going to be A, the "it being noted," then B, then C, then all components of D as all separate votes. All of D will be all together as one, though. Okay, so but we're going to have speakers on the whole thing, so colleagues can comment, and then we'll just do the voting separate. Any other speakers? Yes, Counsel Van Meerebruggen.
You have to remind ourselves, certainly voting age Londoners, are intelligent adults.
Counselor, I'll just let you know, when you're facing the camera, we hear you. When you turn to look downwards, we don't.
Okay, yeah, thanks. This is a different.
Go ahead.
You have to remind ourselves that voting age Londoners are intelligent adults.
Okay, perfect. We have no motions to which notice was given. So we're on to reports. 8.1 is the seventh report of the Community Protective Services Committee. I'll go to councillor Ferrera to present that report.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, apologies. Excuse me, I do have a conflict on 2.7 of the report.
Go ahead. If you have a conflict, can you just identify it again? We broke up a little bit there.
Yeah, so I have a conflict on 2.7 as my wife operates her own childcare business.
Okay, thank you for identifying that. So I'll turn it over to councillor Ferrera to present a motion, or we can, I don't know if you know about other things going to be pulled, but there's at least one. Okay, maybe I'll just ask first then. Is anybody looking for anything else to be dealt with separately aside from the item councillor Van Meerebruggen asked for separately? Okay, go ahead and craft a motion councillor Ferrer.
Thank you, your worship, for the seventh report of the Community Protective Services Committee. We will be pulling item seven. I'll put items one through six and item eight excluding seven on the floor.
Okay, so those are moved by the chair. I'll look for any discussion on any of those items. Okay, there is no discussion on any of those. It's moved by the chair. We'll open that package of items for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries 14 to zero.
Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, and that leaves item seven that I'll put on the floor.
Okay, item seven's on the floor. Any discussion on item seven? Okay, we'll open that one for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries 13 to zero with one recuse.
And that concludes my report for the seventh report of the Community Protective Services.
Great, great job, thank you. Well, on to 8.2, the eighth report of Civic Works Committee. I'll turn it over to councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I will be putting items one to 14, pulling 15, and adding 16.
Okay, does anybody else want anything separate? So it looks like just one to 14 for now, unless there's something else people would like. Okay, I'll let you craft a motion councillor.
Sorry about that. We received a delegation from the Chair of ESACAC. A number of highlights were awarding the contract for the Springbank Dam and the roundabout at Oxford and Gideon, awarding consulting engineering for Hamilton Road, approved new traffic signal lights, and supported a motion for a report back on transit road network and active transportation planning for West London.
Any other speakers on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries 14 to zero.
Go ahead councillor.
I'd like to put number 15 on, which is the update and next steps for gasoline-powered lawn and garden equipment.
Okay, that item is on the floor from the chair. I'll look for discussion councillor Frank.
Thank you. Yes, I asked this item to be pulled as I was the one to add some amendments to the staff direction, and I was hoping to pull it and specifically vote against my amendments, so which are D, I, 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 but leave the staff recommendations which were part A, B, and C of this motion, because I think that work can continue and it will be good to move forward on that item. I did want to highlight, as I included in my letter, I received a lot of communication. I imagine everyone did, including all of council as well as various staff departments. But after listening to the feedback from residents from across London, it was very clear to me that the 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM suggested proposal for limiting gas equipment was too restrictive, and therefore I'm hoping to pull it now so that we can continue with the work that staff are doing and perhaps seeing where that goes instead. So formally, just wanted to pull this, retract it, and vote against it so that we can move forward on this item.
Okay, so I'll just take that as a request to split the vote, the way that you articulated. There's no retracting because it's a committee recommendation, but we hear you saying that you're no longer supportive of the D piece. So we'll make sure that we do, at the very least unless councillors want it divided another way, we'll do D, all components, then we'll do A, B, C, plus the it being noted after. But we'll, I'm just going to keep the speakers list to the whole thing right now. Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm going to add to that. I'm going to request you call all parts separately. I am prepared to receive the staff report. I'm not prepared to support any of the components of this motion. I think we heard very loud and clear from our residents after the amendments were made exactly where they want to handle their lawn care. I do not think we need an awareness campaign. I think the public is more than aware after the last couple of weeks and don't need, I don't think we should be spending resources, staff time, direction, producing promotional materials to make citizens aware of their lawn care choices. And with regard to, you know, continuing on emerging best practices, while I think that that work is always happening, when we start talking about incentive programs and things like that, given the budget constraints we already have and the creation of a new working group, I don't think we're in any position to be offering incentives on things at this point in time. So I will be voting only for part A to receive the staff report and be opposing everything else.
Okay, so it's a further request to break it down, all parts separate. I'm going to suggest A and the it being noted to be attached together, because I'd like to be able to give people the opportunity to, if there were communications sent, the it being noted recognizes that. So now it's going to be A, the it being noted, then B, then C, then all components of D as all separate votes. All of D will be all together as one though. Okay, so but we're going to have speakers on the whole thing, so colleagues can comment, and then we'll just do the voting separate. Any other speakers? Yes, councillor Van Meerebruggen. You're breaking up a little bit councillor, maybe mute and then unmute and see if that helps.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, we have to remind ourselves, voting age Londoners are intelligent adults. So let's treat them as such.
Councillor, I'll just let you know, when you're facing the camera, we hear you. When you turn to look downwards, we don't.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Go ahead.
We have to remind ourselves that voting age Londoners are intelligent adults. So let's treat them as such. They are certainly capable of making their own decisions when it comes to lawn mowers and lawn equipment. Frankly, we have to resist the dark temptation to turn this council into a Politburo of groupthink and indoctrination. I will not support any part of this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor, I would just ask that you not use the language that you used there. I think you could, you should retract the groupthink. I don't think anybody here is groupthinking. We're all capable of making our own decisions, and I think we do that on a regular basis, given the divided votes. So I would ask you to retract that, and I think we hear your other comments pretty clearly.
With respect, no, that's my opinion. I want to share that opinion. You know, we're talking here about trying to indoctrinate a certain point of view to the people of London through their own electoral.
Okay councillor Van Meerebruggen, I have a point of privilege to deal with now, so you're going to have to stop speaking until I deal with the point of privilege. Councillor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you, I guess my indoctrination isn't working, since I'm speaking against what you're saying. But I think the councillor owes us an apology for that.
Okay, so on the point of personal privilege, I have to say I agree with the councillor. To councillor Van Meerebruggen, I'm going to ask you to retract the term indoctrination. Nobody is doing indoctrination here. That is not how council operates, and you can express your very clear opinion, but we're going to do so respectfully and with language that does not make significant assumptions about other councillors and what influences their votes. So I would ask for you to retract that, and if you choose to, you can rephrase it, but you need to retract the term indoctrination.
Okay, so once again, with respect, to my knowledge, I have not used any unparliamentary language. I have not singled out any individuals. I'm calling this a temptation. It's a temptation to go towards that area. And so that was clearly spelled out in my words, and so I will not retract, because we do have freedom of speech within our limits.
Yes councillor, and I'm asking you to retract the way you said it the first time, the way you said it when you said it was a temptation to go down a path. That is very different from outright saying it, which is what you said.
Well, here's what I said. Frankly, we have to resist the dark temptation, I use the word temptation, to turn this council into a Politburo of groupthink and indoctrination. That's it.
So on the point of personal privilege, was this still active? Although I do not agree with the, I will say it this way. It may not be the approach that I or perhaps other members of council would take in the phrasing of language, but I do think the word temptation changes the context of the councillor's comments irrespective of what you feel about them. So I'm going to deem that adjusted language as dealing with the point of personal privilege and the point of personal privilege is dispensed with. And you can challenge the decision of the chair on that if you like, but we'll leave it at that, and if the chair is challenged, I can outline the next steps. But this would be the point if you want to do that. Otherwise, I'm going to deem this.
I have another point of privilege.
A point of privilege?
On this.
Okay, well, you need to deal with, this one is dealt with, so unless you're challenging the chair, this one's going to be dealt with. So this is your time to do so. If you're going to call another point of privilege on the exact same thing, it's better to just deal with challenging my decision than doing a second one. If it's completely unrelated point of personal privilege, then I can entertain that. I just want to be clear, I don't want you to lose your opportunity to challenge my decision on that.
It's not specifically related in terms of the word that you're calling out. I take issue with being referred to as the Politburo. I think it's out of line. I think that that language is inappropriate. This isn't the Cold War. This isn't the Committee of UnLondon Activities, and I think it's disparaging to council as a whole to use that language.
Okay, I had to look up the definition of that to deal with your point of personal privilege. So although based on the definition I looked up, I would say it's an unfortunate approach for a councillor to take. I don't believe it deems warranting the level of a point of personal privilege based on the, based on the language that came before that about moving down that path. So it's the same as I kind of ruled before on a different part of the language that I'm going to deem it as dealt with, and generally caution colleagues to try to use better language even on the right side of the line. So you can challenge me if you'd like councillor.
I'm going to challenge you because I'm quite tired of allowing it.
Okay, so here's what's going to happen colleagues. I've ruled the point of personal privilege to be dealt with. The councillor disagrees with that and is challenging my decision that it has been dispensed with. So we will move to a vote on challenging the chair. If it'll be the decision of the chair to be upheld, so if you agree with me that the point of personal privilege is dealt with, you can vote in the affirmative. If you disagree that it's dealt with, then you vote in the negative. If it is not dealt with, then I will have to proceed to next steps on addressing a point of personal privilege by, well, I'll outline those at the time. But is that a question? Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Just realizing many of this council, we're going to be aware of what next steps is, just.
Sure, I will outline it.
Just usually outline what that would be.
Yes, and I'm going to take some leeway as chair to explain to colleagues the path that we're on so that you understand where we're headed, because this has only happened once before when I'm on council. If council votes to say that my decision stands, it's dealt with, we're done. If council votes to say that my decision, the point of personal privilege, is not dealt with, then I will ask the councillor to retract that specific language. It'll be up to them to decide to or not. If they do, I'm going to, then I get another chance to deem it dealt with based on the new information. If the councillor refuses, then I move to the disorderly conduct section of the Code of Conduct, and we'll have a vote on whether or not to remove the councillor from the meeting for the remainder of the meeting for disrupting council based on not retracting a point or addressing a point of personal privilege. So, but we're on step one of all that right now. And it's, and many of those things are not debatable, just so you know. So we just kind of move through the process of decision-making. So councillor Van Meerebruggen, I know you have your hand up, but I actually have to deal with the challenge of the chair first before we go to anything else, because that has been formally done. So the vote that was before us is that the decision of the chair, the ruling of the chair shall be sustained. So I've ruled that the point of personal privilege is dealt with. So if you agree with that, you vote yes. If you disagree with that, you vote no. Yeah, this is not debatable, so we're just going to put that motion up.
Closing the vote, carries eight to six. The ruling of the chair is sustained.
Okay, so the point of privilege is dealt with. We're in a debate on this. Councillor Van Meerebruggen still has the floor on this debate, and I'm still timing you. So councillor Van Meerebruggen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm finished. Thanks very much.
Other speakers on this? We're now back to the main motion, which is the whole thing, but we're going to divide the votes up into pieces, just for colleagues to remember where we are. Oh yes, go ahead. Oh, I had councillor Ramon, sorry, and then councillor Trosse.
Thank you, and through you. Although I was at Civic Works, or yeah, Civic Works' discussion, I just wanted to double check with staff if they could share a little bit more about C, who the funding submission to FCM would benefit, because my, I guess maybe I had a different understanding of this.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. The intent of C is to work with other municipalities in Ontario to provide an application to FCM for one of their programs related to climate change and environment, to help develop some industry or municipal-wide standards and expectations. There's no decision-making that would come out of C. Any decisions that comes out of that joint research project would come back to the appropriate committee for a decision by council in advance of any changes to our bylaws or policies.
Go ahead councillor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. So where I'm struggling to understand our direction here on this matter is around what we're doing with our own fleet, because I know that we did have some ambitious targets set out on our own fleet, and then through the multi-year budgeting process, some of those were, went, were not funded. So if part C is a multi-municipality project strategy for our own fleet and usage, then yes, I'd support it. But if it's about looking at more on the consumer side, I would have a different opinion on that.
Because we're just looking for clarification on what it applies to.
Madam Chair, the intent would be to tackle both things. So it'd be consumer side for residential use. It'd be consumer side for lawn care company and providers, as well as for our own fleet. So the intent is to do a multi-pronged approach. It would be challenging for us to not, for example, have the same standards we would expect of ourselves for contractors working for us.
All right, councillor Trosse.
Thank you very much. With part D, one and two, removed or voted down, I don't think there's been any opposition submitted on the other items. And to be very, very specific, and I'd like to stand corrected if I'm wrong, I don't think the question of designing and implementing an awareness campaign was at all controversial, at all controversial. I don't think the idea of pursuing this multi-municipality project with our partners in other jurisdictions who are going through the same issues that we're going through was at all controversial. As a matter of fact, we received many, many submissions saying, this is really something that's important for you to be looking at. And those submissions were very well thought out, and some of those submissions went into great detail attaching scientific bibliographies, talking about some of the health implications of emissions, of moving around particles, and noise pollution. Short of, well short of having a public participation meeting with a bylaw on the table, these are very preliminary educational functions, as is D three, having our advisory committees take a look at it. So I think while it's true that there was quite a bit of pushback to a very, very specific measure looking towards the bylaw, I don't think there was pushback at all, or certainly not significant with respect to these other investigative educational functions. And I think it would be a real shame if we see that these other jurisdictions in Ontario are moving ahead with this multi-municipality project, and we're told here we can't do it. So I want to at least give the staff the benefit of being able to follow through on what was in the report. So I think certainly A, B, C, and clause three about advisory committees, I think should all stay on the table and would help move this discussion forward. Not right away. There's no call to do this within a certain amount of time. But I think this is a good discussion for the community to have, because we have been hearing loud and clear from many residents that they want this issue addressed, which is not to say exactly how it's going to be addressed. Those details will come later. But to just cut this short and say, we can't submit this, we can't work on an awareness campaign, I think is a little bit of overkill. So I would urge councillors to support A, A, B, C, and part three of D. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's a possible voting option. I have councillor McAllister next.
Thank you, and through the chair, I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge councillor Frank. I think it takes a lot of courage to step on a political landmine such as this. Clearly, you struck a nerve with Londoners in terms of the lawn care issue, but I do applaud you in terms of your efforts to acknowledge it, correct it, and I do think that warrants acknowledgement. And I do just want to remind my colleagues that, you know, we're going to disagree on issues, but I would say please do so respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship, just before I make my comments, I would like to go through you to staff, just to follow up on councillor Trosse's question around advisory groups and getting information. And if A and, A, B, and C are supported, would that normally go through the advisory groups to get information and information back to us?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Generally speaking, when we have policy changes that we're proposing related to our own equipment or to how we manage within the city and the community more broadly, we would take those to the relevant advisory groups. We also often end up on advisory group agendas because we've been requested to appear. We have been requested to appear on some of the advisory groups related to this matter in the past. We've got some pending requests that we anticipate in the future that we have said we would wait, obviously pending the direction from council. So I don't know that we'd be precluded from speaking to the advisory groups if we were to proceed with A, B, and C without D.
Your worship, and through you to staff, I would definitely encourage you, if this is passed, to do so. I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank staff for their presentation at Civic Works and for the work that they've done on this. This has been an ongoing issue. I know it's been an ongoing issue in the ward that I represent with gas-powered equipment. I applaud them for doing. I applaud them for doing the extra work and the education piece and working alongside other municipalities, as well as stakeholders in the community. I think that's a really important part, as well as opportunities to take advantage of some funding. I do want to thank Councillor Frank as well for her courage. I think there's no other word to say that. The motion, I was disappointed that it is being withdrawn. I know we, it wasn't perfect. I think we do have a process, public participation. How can we improve that motion? Would have been a discussion that should have happened. What ended up happened was a lot of loud noises coming at us, really not understanding even what that motion meant. So, I do want to thank her for bringing it forward in a respectful and professional way. I would encourage this council to support the work that staff has been doing up to date and the work that is needed in the education piece going forward. So, supporting A, B, and C is what I would encourage this council to do. Thank you.
Other speakers to this who haven't spoken yet. Okay. I'm just going to organize the vote with the clerks, and then we're, debate will be over, because no one else is on the speaker's list, and then we'll do a series of votes on all components of this, based on what everybody was asking for. Okay, I'm going to, based on the advice of the clerks, I know I said I would divide it a certain way. I hear how councillor spoke. My opinion of what the committee put before us is that in D, and given the answers from our staff as well, D one and two, the circulate the report in three, it's related to the report back in DI, it's part of D. Now, if your concern is that, if your concern is that if we do C, that that means you can't circulate that to advisory committees, our deputy city manager just indicated that's not the case, so that can still happen. So, I'm going to keep D altogether, because if D three is not successful, it does not preclude C being circulated to advisory committees, should that be the case, that it passes. Okay? So, that way, we just keep it tight, and we're not having an odds. We might, we might be left with a piece that makes no sense, and I don't, I want to try to avoid that, given the committee's recommendation. So, that means we'll do all of D, and then we'll do A, and then B, and then C, is how we'll vote. Okay. So, I'm just going to ask Councillor Hopkins, regardless of which way you're voting on these, maybe you could just move them all as I go through them. That way, I don't have to ask for other speakers, since I think I sounded, it sounded like you were supportive of most of it. Okay. All right, okay, so we're going to put D on the floor first.
Can I make a point of order?
Sure, make a point of order.
In light of the fact that D talks about the work of the Community and Protective Services Committee, I'm wondering if that becomes moot too, because the Community and Protective Services Committee is well able to control their future agendas if they, if they, if they, if they need to do that. So, I now, I would, I would agree that three under D is not necessarily in light of what the deputy city manager said. So, I think, I think that D might even be ruled beyond, I don't know, I just want to try to make this a little simpler, and I think D is not necessary, including Part Three, which I previously thought was, but in light of what she said, it's not. I don't know if that last sentence made any sense.
Yeah, so we are in alignment on D three? I disagree. The committee has passed a recommendation on D. It's altogether, doesn't matter what committee. Things come to one committee, they get reported back to another committee. This is a specific direction that this committee has asked for council to consider. It's before council. Council can send things to any committee, so the rest of it stays together, and we vote on it. Okay. So, that's, that's dealing with the point of order. You've already spoken, so this better be a point of order, councillor.
Yes, it is a point of order, so I am putting D on the floor.
Oh, okay, well, yes, you're putting D on the floor. Yeah. Okay, so D's on the floor, all of D altogether. Okay, we're going to open that for voting.
Sorry, are we doing D first?
Okay.
Closing the vote, motion fails, zero to fourteen.
I'd like to now put A on the floor.
Okay, A is on the floor. We've already had a discussion on this, so I'll open A for voting. And just so you know, it has the "it being noted" clause attached to it, too.
Closing the vote, motion fails, thirteen to one.
Your Worship, I'd like to put B, C together. Would that work, or do you want it split up?
No, I was asked to have it split, so.
I'll put B on the floor.
So, you'll put B on? Okay. All right, so B, B will open for voting now.
Closing the vote, motion fails, five to nine.
Go ahead, councillor.
And I'd like to put C on the floor.
Okay, we'll open C for voting.
Closing the vote, motion fails on a tie, seven to seven.
Actually, you have one more item in your report.
Is that number sixteen?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll put number sixteen on the floor, which is the Transit Road Network and Active Transportation Planning for West London.
Yes, so that's on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Okay. So, oh, yes, speaker? Okay, Deputy Mary Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. So, I did not ask to have this pulled, but I will not be supporting it, and I want to share my reasons why. I appreciate that the councillor who brought it forward may have good intentions, but in my opinion, this is actually not doing anything that is not already being done by other motions, including the work that staff are doing on the Master Mobility Plan, which is referenced in this motion, but also with respect to direction for looking to options for higher-order transit in the future for the west of London. That is already a direction provided by council that was issued, actually, in the last term of council by Your Worship, Councillor Hopkins, Councillor Lehman, and former councillor Squire at the time, I believe. Councillor Hopkins is shaking no, so you may, I know that three of you signed, and I think that one other spoke strongly in support of it, to look at alternate routes for that. I don't believe that asking our staff to pull apart the work that's happening on the Master Mobility Plan and do very site-specific or area-specific, what I'm going to call secondary plans, although that's not really what we're talking about here, but what I'm going to call maybe a mini-plan within the Master Mobility Plan, is something that I want to direct staff to take time to do. I want them to finish the Master Mobility Plan. And I think when we, we have clauses that say, consider ongoing input from residents and businesses. I actually personally think that that's kind of, I personally take offense to that, because I think that that's ongoing process that we do all the time. I don't think that that language is necessary or even really appropriate to be in a motion. At every planning committee meeting on developments, we have public participation meetings on things, there have been multiple public engagements on the Master Mobility Plan, including here in chambers and out in the public at large. So, to say that, or to imply, which is how I take this, although I recognize that this is my personal view, not necessarily the intent of councillors, but to imply that that is not being done already, doesn't sit well with me. And I'm just not going to continue to support motions that are asking staff to undertake work that they're already undertaking. So, that's why I will not be supporting this.
Councillor Lehman.
Back in September of 2021, the previous council directed staff to deliver a multi-mobility plan. And at that time, I added a motion to that, and I'm going to read it, just because I want to add, ask a specific question to that. Civic administration be directed to include specific actions to address traffic congestion areas on Wonderland Road, the development of the future mobility master plan, and it being noted that a corridor will be evaluated as part of the upcoming plan with a focus on transit, high occupancy vehicle use, and active transportation. So, through you, Chair, to staff, does that, is that enough direction for you to deliver, I think, what the intent of this particular motion that we're discussing?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly, that motion, along with the intended scope of the mobility master plan, would address A, C, and D. B is related to a much more granular level of transportation planning, that is not a master planning level piece of work, and will be referred to the transportation impact assessment for the pending development for the area.
Thank you. Other speakers. Councillor Ramon.
Thank you, and through you. So, I'll be supporting the motion. As it was discussed, as planning applications were coming forward, and residents were sharing concerns, one of the challenges that I think we need to see as a, as a potential barrier for participation can be that someone provides their opinion at one committee, and that they perhaps perceive that that information does, is making it to staff, and therefore their, their input is now recorded in, let's say, the Master Mobility Plan. But in the case of what we kept hearing repeatedly at planning during some of these applications, what we were hearing was, I don't support this project, and part of the reason I don't support it is because of transit and transportation-related concerns, but that information would not make its way to the MMP unless the individual then went and shared that information individually. So, I, I think that there is a bit of a disconnect. Yes, I know staff are there, and they're hearing part of that, but the volume of that response, I don't believe is being effectively captured because of a difference of where it sits within a committee. So, I understand that, that that's where this discussion came from. Residents are concerned. They are absolutely concerned. Business owners are concerned. We are hearing those concerns. So, we're trying to find a mechanism so that residents and business owners feel as though they've been heard. And I don't think that because we passed a motion, perhaps, the last term of council, to say that this term of council hears you is a bad thing. I think it actually says, we hear you, and we understand, that because of the increased work that we're doing around high-density development in these corridors, we realize that the strategy that maybe we had in 2021, that we also need to bolster that strategy even further. People are expecting us to respond accordingly, based on the developments that are coming. One of the things that I added to the discussion is the "it being noted" clause, and I see this as quite different, and something that needs to be included. I do think that it's important that we highlight the fact that funds that were going to be used for projects in the north and the west were reprioritized, because when we go to make decisions later on, I think it's important that we reflect on how we've spent dollars that were earmarked elsewhere, because right now, they're having impacts. And so, I do think that's important, that we continue this conversation. I think this is an opportunity to do so. I thank Councillor Trosse for bringing this forward.
Other speakers. Oh, Councillor Van Meergen, actually, I have you on the list.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have to admit to ourselves, I mean, we're a city approaching 500,000 people, half a million. Wonderland Road is incredibly important to our local economy and the way we get around and the way goods and services move. We have to admit to ourselves that we're at the point where the only real relief is going to come with road widening, the widening of Wonderland, and that was always the policy for, I believe, at least a couple of decades for the city of London, and as late as the last council, that was the go-ahead. The DCs were set aside, it was all set to go. In the last term of council, we even started having community meetings about the road widening of Wonderland from Southale to Sarnia Road. And that has been set aside, in my view, a wrong-headed policy, but it's one that's going to inevitably have to be reactivated, because that, in the final analysis, will be the only true relief. Thanks, Mayor.
Other speakers to this, Councillor Ferrer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking to this motion, like, I am very appreciative that I saw this come to Civic Works, and I would be supporting it. It would be, motions like this, especially when we start talking about congestion in the area and those developments, as Councillor Ramon spoke to, in the area, that would have me carry the needle over for me to approve certain applications that we see coming forward. We do see that this, there's another item that's going to be coming, I'm not going to speak to it specifically, but that item basically says, you know, that it's a rapid transit corridor, and as we all know, we don't have that higher-order transit in the area. So, it would be something like this, that would make sense for me to approve applications that I'd like to see, you know, approved going forward. So, I will be supportive of this. I think this makes complete sense, and it does, as far as I see, it alleviates the concerns with congestion and the traffic that we will see as we start seeing more intensification. So, I do hope that we can support this, this motion. This is something that the city needs, especially in this area.
Councillor Frank.
Thank, yeah, there you go. Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion, because I think, again, staff are working on this, but this provides further clarity, and as we know, this area continues to be congested, very congested and heavily trafficked. Do you think we need to avoid the temptation to continue with the status quo, Carbrain Solutions, like ideas like Wonder, road widening at Wonderland, and look at other options available to us through mechanisms like this and the Master Mobility Plan?
Other speakers. Councillor Trosse.
Thank you very much. Quite frankly, I'm a little surprised through the Chair that this is so controversial, because when I tried raising these exact issues with respect to a particular development application at PEC as a guest, I was told, you know, you really should take that over to Civic Works and let them do a broader policy study, which I took that, I took that advice very seriously, and that's exactly what I did here. And what may have been said in 2019, what may have been said or not said five years ago, we've got a lot of additional applications coming. got a lot of additional applications coming through. They're not done. We're going to be seeing a lot more in this area. And we're going to be seeing a lot more congestion in this area. And yes, talking about whether a particular application has done an adequate traffic study is something that's on the table. We're going to have that discussion later today. But I do think that this is a forward-thinking motion. And I was very, very careful when I chose the words to put in here. And I was very happy that Counselor Rahman worked with me on this. There was never, ever, any discussion about the concept of filtered permeability. None. There was never any discussion about what it means to be building new streets that are going to have the effect of cut-through traffic. And, you know, again, I was told, "Well, if you have a problem with the need for filtered permeability at the Beaver Brook and at the Westfield Gates, you can't put that on this particular developer. You've got to raise that separately as a policy issue, and Civic Works is the place to do it." Civic Works did it. So, I think it's a stretch to say, "This is a redundant motion," because we've dealt with all these things before. We don't have an area plan for this area. And I specifically asked this question at the PEC meeting, and I was told, and Steph can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to misspeak, but after the East Prong and the South Prong, and the Central Prong of the BRT went through, the attention, the planning attention, quite rightly, was redirected to those projects, and not towards the North Prong or the West Prong. So, I really think it's a distortion to say there's really nothing in this motion that is new. There's a lot in here that's new. And the fact that it's coming from Civic Works, and that we're tying it, we're tying it to the mobility master plan, we're tying it to other potential planning exercises, I think it's good policy. And I would certainly hope that my colleagues will support this motion. Thank you very much.
Other speakers. Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I want to thank the councillor for bringing in this motion. I too recall being at the PEC meeting and being told that this is where this motion should go, to Civic Works Committee. I know at PEC, many of the zoning applications for intensification, not only in this area, are all around, "How do we move?" And we need to align our committees and share that information, especially at a time when we're going through the mobility master plan. I understand there aren't any concerns with this motion. It really validates what we, as councillors, and I in particular, in Ward Nine, which is west of West, and how we develop and intensify, and how we move around, is a very important conversation in the community. That's what this motion is representing, the community and their thoughts, and how, when we need to develop, how do we move around? So I would encourage every councillor to support this, I think, very important motion.
Okay. Any other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor Privill.
Thank you, Chair. I will be very brief. I will be supporting this motion, as I was during our committee. I do believe that this motion is more detailed and more proactive, and we all know this is a very challenging, and will be a very challenging, area. So therefore, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
I'll turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Lewis. I have myself on the list. And I will recognize Mayor Morgan.
So, okay, so a lot of colleagues spoke on this. I just want to add my own context to it, because I think there's a lot of pieces of this that's being added in that directly relates to the motion, but also other discussions at other committees and previous decisions of council. So just to pull it all together, I certainly agree with those colleagues who feel like a number of components of this motion are duplicative with some previous directions. I do, though, recognize that new members of council will want to add, you know, their own directions and input and feedback within, you know, the direction that we're going. On the piece about filtered permeability, I'm not convinced that that's the right way to go. I'm not convinced that it should have been so prescriptive. There are many options there. But I'm not adverse to a ward councillor having concerns about the traffic flows in their ward. I mean, I've done the exact same thing when I was a ward councillor in multiple parts of the ward over the course of time. And I think getting information about how to address concerns, or whether they're justified or not yet, because nothing has been built or happened, is a fair responsibility of a ward councillor. So, you know, for me, there's a lot of this, even though it's duplicative, that I probably can just get behind supporting and us moving to the next step. But there are a few context pieces that I want to raise. I know the "it being noted" clause was brought up, and I don't disagree that that's the case. I will say, it's also been brought up that there have been previous directions integrated into the master mobility plan that basically recognize that. And on the funding that we received from the federal government, we know that there were certain roots within the original plan that were very weak, with a very low cost-benefit ratio. And that was before we saw all of the cost appreciation that happened, which all of us are aware of because of the budget amendment that we had to make in the budget to support that. And we know that we're on the hook. We're on the hook for those because of the previous agreements. Now, there is a discussion happening with the federal government about saying, "Listen, with this cost appreciation, we have to think about this a different way." So, my concern would have been, I'm kind of glad we didn't lock ourselves in to a previous deal with the federal government, where we would have been on the hook for all of that cost appreciation and the other routes. I have comfort in knowing that the permanent transit funding, which comes online in 2026, and will take applications likely in 2025, is available in alignment with the end of the master mobility plan process. Now, there are some parameters around that the federal government is attaching, that I think we have to have discussions with as municipalities. But we're probably in not a bad position to be able to pitch transit solutions for the West and the North, although this is mainly geared around the West, at a time when we can talk about ensuring that we get some of the cost appreciations that have occurred in the last number of years covered for those options with the new permanent transit funding. And so, I think, I recognize all the components of this motion. I just want to say, I actually think we're in not a bad position as a municipality, given the previous directions, given the commitment of this council. What I don't hear is anybody saying that we don't need to address transit in fast-growing areas of the city. I think we're all in alignment on that. We may have differences of opinion on which parts of the motion we support because of previous directions. So, for me, I think this has been a long debate. I think regardless of how the components go on this, aside from the suggestion that Counselor Trosaw made, I think much of this work is going to happen. And for me, I'm going to err on the side of giving my new colleagues some support and allowing them to express their support for some previous decisions we made. And I will support the motion, given the context that I've added today from the chair.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I will return the chair to you. I have no one else on the speakers' list at this time.
I have no one else on the speakers' list at this time either. So, with that, I think this is all together. No one's asked for it to be separated. So, all right, we're going to open the whole thing for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 10 to 4.
And that is my report.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the report. Thank you, Counselor Hopkins. We have the 10th Report of SPPC. We'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present that report.
Thank you, worship. I am going to deal with Item 7. That's the 10th Report of the Governance Working Group separately. I'll just advise colleagues that with respect to that, there is just an addition to the Job Description Committee. And with respect to the other item that I am going to be pulling is the appointment to the London Community Advisory Committees. As colleagues will recall, we had one individual who was appointed to both, to two committees. Outreach was done by the clerks, so I'll advise colleagues on that when we get to that item. So, those are the two items, Item 14 and Item 7, that I'm aware of that need to be dealt with separately. Look now to see if colleagues want anything else pulled to be dealt with separately.
Were colleagues like anything else dealt with separately? I don't see any, so you can craft a motion.
Then, your worship, I am prepared to move Items 1 through 6, inclusive, and 8 through 13, inclusive, as well as Item 15.
Okay, so we have basically everything on the floor, with the exception of 7 and 14. Look for any comments on any of those items that colleagues would like to make. Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Thank you, worship. I will now move to Item 7, which is the 10th Report of the Governance Working Group. As was indicated in my preamble, at the Governance Working Group, there was actually an indication from Counselor Cuddy that he had an interest in serving on the Job Description Subcommittee as well. That was not captured in the SPPC direction, so I've had a request to pull this one so that we could amend. Item 7, Clause 4.3 of the 10th Report of the Governance Working Group, that is Clause AIIII, which considers the appointments to the Job Description Subcommittee. Counselors Privill, Hopkins, and Rahman have indicated interest in writing. Counselor Rahman to serve as the chair. I would like to amend that to include Counselor Cuddy's inclusion in this committee as well. And then I'm prepared to move that up, but I think because it's an amendment, I may need a seconder.
Right. So, because it's a committee recommendation, you'll have to move what the committee passed, and then subsequently, you can move the amendment, which I do need a seconder for the amendment, and I see Counselor Rahman willing to second, which means we have the committee recommendation on the floor, but then we've amended it, so we're actually just speaking to the amendment now. I don't know if you have any further words on the amendment?
I will not share any further words on the amendment. It's Counselor Cuddy, so if he wishes to speak to his involvement, I'll leave that to him.
It's up to him to put his hand up, if he'd like, which he did. So, go ahead.
Chair, I'm fine, thank you. And I'd be delighted to serve on the committee under the Chair of, Chair Rahman. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers to the amendment, which is to add Counselor Cuddy to the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
You need a as amended motion, and then?
Yes, so I'll now move as amended.
I need a seconder for the as amended. Counselor Hopkins willing to second, okay. Debate on the as amended motion, which now includes a piece of Counselor Cuddy's appointment as well. Okay, seeing none, we'll open the as amended motion.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, worship. And moving on to Item 14, this is the consideration of appointments to the London Community Advisory Committees. If you'll allow a little preamble, I will inform colleagues that Leah Thomas Gray was contacted by the clerks. She's indicated her preference is to serve on the Integrated Transportation Committee Advisory Committee, and actually would be concerned about being on too, and the workload that that would require. So she's indicated her preference is to withdraw from the Diversity, Inclusion, and Anti-Oppression Advisory Committee. I want to take this opportunity to also share with colleagues that in the runoff voting, Kate Warmington, who was on the ballot, she was the last individual to drop off the ballot by a difference of one vote. And so, there was actually a four-vote difference between her and the next closest candidate on that ballot. So I'm prepared to move the committee recommendation, and then I'm going to put an amendment on the floor that the appointment of the Diversity, Inclusion, Anti-Oppression Advisory Committee be amended to remove Leah Thomas Gray and replace her with Kate Warmington.
Okay, so, order of operations, you, as presenting the committee report, has put the committee's report on the floor. You're moving an amendment, as you just described, but I need a seconder for the amendment. Counselor Hopkins. Okay, there's a seconder for the amendment. Okay, debate on the amendment, then, which is the removal of the individual who's serving on another committee, and has indicated that in the proposal to take the next highest vote getter. Okay, I don't see any debate on that, so we'll open the amendment for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
And now moving the as amended? Okay, seconder for the as amended. Counselor Privill. Any discussion for the as amended motion, which is now all the committee appointments? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
And that, your worship, will conclude the 10th Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the 8th Report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman.
Thank you, your worship. I have requests to pull, Number 8, Number 9, and Number 11.
Would anybody like anything else separate besides 8, 9, and 11? Okay, I'll let you make a motion, Counselor.
So I'll move Items 1 through 7, and Number 10, and 12.
Okay, well, we pull that motion up. I'm going to look for any speakers to those items. Right now, we're doing everything but, everything except 8, 9, and 11. So, everything else. Okay, no speakers on the rest of it, which is moved. We'll just give a second to just get that motion grabbed. Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, go ahead, Chair.
I'll put Number 8 regarding 743 Wellington Road on the floor.
Okay, that's put on the floor by the chair. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open Item 8 for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 11 to 3.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. I'll put Number 9 regarding 530 Oxford Street West on the floor.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Ferrera.
Thanks, your worship. So for this one, I traditionally was against it, but after we have approved the other motion, and I do see that as in good faith, it makes more sense for me to carry me over on this application. So, I will be changing my vote, and my original position, and I will be voting in favor for this one.
Anybody else? Counselor Trosaw?
To the chair, I was planning on voting against this, and I was
Through the Chair, I was planning on voting against this, and I was also prepared to use my entire five minutes to explain why. I guess you can refer back to a lot of the things that I said with respect to seven thirty-five Wonderland to explain why I can't support this. And unlike the Ward Counselor, who I quite understand what you're, what you're saying, and I hope in the long run this deals with the problem, there, for me, there are just too many immediate problems with this particular application that I cannot bring myself in good conscience to vote, to vote for it, and explain to people and explain to myself how I've, how I've been consistent. I don't think there's been an adequate traffic study. I don't think, I certainly don't think that there's been an adequate consideration of the, 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 you know, what's going on along the Oxford and Wonderland corridor. The comments that I made with respect to seven thirty-five Wonderland urged that in, in approving, in approving, in approving these development applications, we can take, we can, we can take, we can depart from just looking at the borders of the property, and we could take a broader, a broader view in terms of how this fits in with other development applications. And for that reason, especially given the enormity of the size of this, this, this is much bigger. This, this one is much bigger than even, even seven thirty-five Wonderland. So I, I feel in order to be true to some of the things that I've been saying all along and consistent, I'm going to vote no on this. And I may be the only one, but that's how I feel, and that's what I'm going to do. So, thank you very much.
Other speakers to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, I'll put number eleven regarding one ninety-three to one ninety-nine College Avenue on the floor.
Okay, this item's on the floor, I'll look for speakers. Okay, seeing, go ahead, Counselor Trosso.
I wanted to give some of my other council colleagues the benefit to speak to this because I, I spoke to this at PEC, and I have not changed my position. Whereas the last vote, I, I see how I could have shifted on that one, I'm really adamant on this one. And really, in my view, what we're, what we're talking about here is the future and the integrity of the near-campus neighborhood regulations. Now, I'm not going to go through all of the background information because everybody is well aware of what's at stake here. This is also pending at the tribunal, and we also, we also have had the benefit of a very, very detailed, and in my opinion, extensive, and in my opinion, very well thought out, staff report. And the staff report recommended against this project, and it did so on three important grounds. First, that it's not consistent with the official plan. Second, that it's not consistent with the zoning bylaw. And third, it's not consistent with the near-campus neighborhood regulations. And the near-campus regulations are something that this council has been giving quite a bit of thought to lately. So I'd like to back up a little bit. When London was asked by the federal government to increase the as-of-right number of units that could, that could be had on a property from three, which was mandated by the province, to four, this council, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was that was a fifteen to nothing vote. Everybody agreed with it. I did ask the question before voting on it, to make, to make sure that this would not preclude a review of the near-campus neighborhood provisions, and I was told that that would happen. And indeed, that did happen. And what happened next was there was a very detailed process of looking at the new near-campus neighborhood provisions. And the neighborhood, the neighborhood associations worked very closely together and with the staff to come up with what was, I think, heralded as a very reasonable compromise, not as strong as the old near-campus neighborhood provisions were, but enough, enough in there to satisfy the residents of the areas that they should, that they could support it. And that, too, passed by a vote of fifteen to nothing. Now, certainly, under, under these regulations, one, one, and, and under the four-unit rule that this council has approved, one would have as a matter of right, subject to doing the, you know, the, the measurements and looking at the floor area ratio, one would have as a matter of right the ability to build four units on a property. And for each property we've got here, there's no question that, that four units could be, could be built. This council could even entertain going above that a little bit. However, however, I think for this council to turn our backs on a very, very well thought out staff recommendation, and to turn our backs on what we said we were going to do about the near-campus neighborhood, and remember, this project is not on Richmond Street. It's not the next house in from Richmond Street. It's in the middle of the block. There is no question that this project, whatever you want to say about the official plan and the zoning bylaw, is clearly not contemplated by the near-campus neighborhood regulations. And I, and I, and I think, I called on people in my neighborhood and throughout Old North to recognize that the old days of single-family, single, single occupancy dwelling on one property are coming to a close, and that we are under increasing encouragement from the, the provincial government?
Thirty seconds.
Three. And the federal government, four, to, you know, to up that. But I think for us to turn our back when everything we've been through with the near-campus neighborhood really flies in the face of reasonableness, and it's going to leave people not just in this neighborhood, but throughout Old North and throughout other neighborhoods that don't even have the same level of protections as we do in the near-campus neighborhood, wondering what this council is doing. So I would urge you to reject this application and go back to the staff recommendation, which was very sound.
Time's up, Counselor.
Thank you.
Other speakers on this matter? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. So I moved this recommendation at committee, and I stand by that. You know, we've heard and we've seen a few letters come in from the neighborhood about fit with the neighborhood, character, and yet, right across the street from this property is an eight-story building. At the end of the street, a twelve-story. Behind, a four-story. And I know the residents will say, oh, it's three and a half. It's four stories of residential units, whether one is partially below grade or not, it's still four stories of residential in terms of density. This is absolutely consistent with the existing conditions in the neighborhood. This is also the result of a non-decision from councils, multiple councils, by the way, because this precludes even the previous term of council, it goes back that far, which is why it's before the OLT, because nobody wanted to make a decision on this. Well, it's time to make a decision, the OLT is going to do that, and what we are doing today is endorsing a position with the OLT that says we would be supportive of this. When we talk about all of these policies and factors, the London Plan, this actually has references to the nineteen eighty-nine official plan in it, which is no longer in force and effect. So when we look at all of these things, we also have to be flexible and recognize the changing circumstances of the world we live in today, in which we have a housing crisis. And it's not just an affordability crisis, it is an affordability crisis, but it is also an inventory crisis. And when we look at what the existing conditions are in the neighborhood, eight stories across the street, twelve stories at the end of the street, four stories behind, this fits with the character of the neighborhood. In a future London Plan update, as we're reviewing heightened density requirements across the city right now, I'm sure that this would be consistent in the future, and I'm quite sure that when this goes to OLT, the OLT will be supportive of it as well. That's why I moved it, and that's why I'm encouraging colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and I will not be supporting this. I think, to me, it is something that I would not want in a neighborhood, the intensification, it's more than twice the amount, I think that's awfully high for a neighborhood. No, it's not on a main arterial road. I, I do have concerns that when we support such intensification, we really do change that neighborhood quite a bit. I, always looking for some balance here, too, and I know it's at the OLT, I know that I am supportive of staff recommendation. One of the things, there are a number of policies there, and I'm starting to see a lot more of staff's recommendations coming to us, and we change that and, and change the recommendation, and I really do think we need to be very careful if we do not support our policies, that we should change them, it's that simple. So I will not be supporting the committee's recommendation, but supporting our staff's. Thanks.
Other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor Ferrera.
Thank you, Worship. So this one, I was having a lot of trouble. I went back and forth on supporting and not supporting the recommendation from the committee and the recommendation from staff. But for me, as it was spoke to already with the North Campus Neighborhood and the policy direction there, I see this as, you know, I have a North Campus Neighborhood, a very big section of that in my ward, too, and I know that the residents who live within that area are very particular on the protections that they get from that policy direction. So because of that, and because I do see this as a little bit of a deviation from the North Campus Neighbors, or the, the near-campus neighborhood, sorry, I will be going with the staff recommendation, I won't be voting on the committee recommendation.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, then it's the committee's recommendation that's on the floor, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries nine to five.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, that concludes the eighth report of the Planning and Environment Committee.
Okay, that brings us to the tenth report of the Corporate Services Committee, that's Counselor McAllister, if you want to present the report.
Thank you, and through the Chair, happy to report the tenth report of Corporate Services Committee. I've got no request to pull any of these items, just noting for council that items ten, eleven, and twelve were referred to a future Corporate Services meeting. So I'll move all items.
Counselor Mayor Bergen, you want something separate?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'd like two point three.
Counselor, you got to just face your computer so we can hear the items you want separate.
Yeah, two point three, which is eight, we'll call that separately. And if we could also call ten, eleven, and twelve separately. Or you can call ten, eleven, and twelve together if that works.
Okay. I'll make a comment on ten, eleven, and twelve in a second, but I appreciate the ask. Any other items that anybody needs dealt with separately? Okay, so, Counselor McAllister, I'll come back to you in a sec. I want to say, I have to raise this with the clerk, the item the committee did on ten, eleven, and twelve show up as separate items on the agenda. If you look at what the committee actually recommended, they're contained fully within one singular motion B, which captures not only them, but the other proclamation requests. So it's my intent to ask the Chair to deal with the four-point-two item, which is four-point-two from the committee, which then included all of the proclamations together as one singular item, because that was the committee's intent. The committee packaged those together, put them together, they should have been listed together as one item on the agenda, despite the fact that they refer to different components. In four-point-two, there's an A and a B, and B contains the three items that you see listed as ten, eleven, and twelve. So that's how we're going to deal with that when we get there, because that was what the committee did, it was, shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been structured that way on the agenda. But, but we're not there yet, so I'll let, given the, the request to pull things separately, I have Counselor McAllister make a motion.
Okay, with the notice to pull those items, willing to put items one through seven and nine as one, and noting that four-point-two, four-point-three, and four-point-four would be folded into item ten. So right now, I'm just putting one through seven and nine on the floor.
Okay, I think Counselor Ramon wants something slightly different, too.
Thank you, if you can pull item nine, please.
Okay, I will, once again, re-craft that. Items one through to seven on the floor.
So just one through seven now, we'll deal with the other ones separately. Okay, any comments, questions on one through seven? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open one through seven for voting.
Counselor Trosso? Second call, Counselor Trosso, marking absent, closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Go ahead, Counselor McAllister.
Your Worship, I'd like to call a point of order, please.
What's the point of order?
We are seeing a developing pattern of counselors exiting the chambers without informing the Chair or the clerk, which is a violation of our council policy and procedure bylaw, and they seem to be leaving to go engage with constituents after a vote has happened. I understand if there are needs for a, a quick washroom break in and out, but the, a meeting of council is a meeting of council, it's not an opportunity to go and engage with individuals who've just left the gallery, and I'd like this addressed, Your Worship.
Point of order related to the procedure bylaw, so just give me a moment. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna outline two sections of the procedure bylaw that relate to this for colleagues' attention. One is when we're voting. So a member shall not leave their seat or make any noise or disturbance while a vote is being taken until the result is declared. That's easily to, easy to enforce. You can't vote, get up, walk out. You gotta wait for the vote to be finalized. The other piece is the leaving the meeting, but it's also leaving meeting not to return. A member shall not leave the meeting when they do not intend to return thereto without first advising the chair. And so a member can leave for a period of time, as long as they're returning to the meeting. It has been a custom, although not outlined in the procedure bylaw, if you're going to leave for an extended period of time, to let the chair and the clerks know, so that we're able to mark that down and note that in the record, which they try to do. But the provision about not returning is important, because if council member has to go and they're not coming back, you gotta let the chair know so that we know you're not returning. We can log you out of the voting system and make the appropriate notes. So I appreciate the concern raised. I feel by outlining these two provisions, and I will make sure the members of council who aren't here are aware of them. And I will ask for the courtesy of, if you're gonna leave for more than, I mean, people need washroom breaks. Feel free to go do that, right? You need to step out for a minute. If you're gonna leave for an extended period of time, although not particularly prescribed in the procedure bylaw, is a nice courtesy to the chair and those running the meetings to be able to note and prepare the vote, so that we're not calling your name constantly when you're not here. So I'm gonna leave it as, I have heard the point of order. I've outlined the rules of procedure, certainly ready to enforce them. And I'll make sure that other members of council who aren't present at the moment are aware of them. And I'm gonna proceed from there and deal. The point of order is dealt with. Counsel Hopkins, we don't have anything on the floor at the moment, so.
No, I do have a point of order.
Okay. If you have a point of order, then you can say point of order and rise. Go ahead.
As a follow-up, does, what is the process when you are online and you do not have your video? Are you recognized as being removed? Or how does that follow through when, how does the chair recognize a council member
Okay. So Counsel, this is gonna be, just gonna include a couple of pieces. So from a point of order standpoint, you're raising an issue of procedure under the procedure bylaw. So under the procedure bylaw, we actually don't have a specific rule about cameras on, off attendance. Now, what council has done is established a separate policy related to this, which has two relevant sections, although I would remind you that the chair enforces the procedure bylaws for the proceedings of the meeting. Council policy is a different direction, and matters of violation of council policy is dealt with through other processes, like the code of conduct and other things. So from the enforcement of the meeting perspective, I enforce, and all the other chairs do, is the procedure bylaw in the running of the meeting and the navigating of the meeting. So it is silent on those pieces. Now, what I do to ensure attendance, what the clerks do, is you'll see me often call if cameras are not on for, when we, say, move into closed session or move back into public session, I would often call for ensuring that members are present. There's also, obviously, voting queues that occur when we have votes to ensure, and you'll see the clerk call out if someone is missing a vote, just like in council, if they forget to click the button, those at home receive the same queue. Now, on the policy matter, which, and I'll provide myself some leeway here, which is not a matter of a point of order or procedure bylaw, and for the reminder of members of council, there's two pieces that are relevant. So members are generally required to have their cameras on, but they can turn them off if they have any issues of internet connectivity or bandwidth that may interfere with the ability to operate. So it's kind of a very discretionary basis on when you can have your camera on or off, depending on your, the connection that you have established. Now, any, so, but generally, the practice is leave them on. Any member participating remotely, if they need to leave the meeting, they have a requirement to step away prior to the adjournment of the meeting, say, for a personal break, or they need to attend some other personal matter, they would log themselves out of the session, which is where the clerks would see them leave. And we take that, given not everybody can chime in and say, hey, I'm leaving, although I know some of us have done it, as notice of leaving the meeting. And then they rejoin. If they rejoin, they basically log back in. We see them log back in. We start recording their votes. And then we can actually see the login and logouts of escribe when people are in and out. So that's, so the, on the matter of the point of order, there's nothing for me to enforce, besides the general practices of ensuring members are there. On the matter of policy, I've shared the general policy with counselors. We can certainly have the clerk circulate that as a reminder to colleagues, but that's not something that I would enforce as the chair, nor with the committee chairs. That's a matter of council following general policy, and there are other, there are other provisions to deal with, any sort of issues related to that. So I'm gonna deem that as responding to your point of order, unless you disagree. So back to Counsel McAllister. And we've completed one voting. Now we're on to another matter.
Okay. Thank you, through the chair. I'll put item 8 on the floor.
Item 8 is on the floor. Moved by the chair. Any discussion?
No one.
Okay. Seeing none, then we're gonna open 8 for voting.
Motion carries 12 to 1.
Putting, through the chair, putting item 9 on the floor.
Okay. Number 9 is on the floor. I'll look for any comments or questions on 9. Seeing none? Okay. Okay. Colleagues, Counsel Trosso wasn't actually logged back into escribe, so we just have to do the revote with him logged in.
Motion carries 12 to 2.
Counsel McAllister?
I'd like to put item 10 on the floor, which I believe now incorporates 11 and 12.
Yeah. So item 10 is actually, the, from the committee report, it's 4.2, which has both an A and a B. The A is the, referred to a future meeting of Corporate Services Committee. The B is the direction to review the current proclamations policy, including blah, blah, blah. And then incorporates the piece of the, the proclamations that were in the committee's hands, as well as any future ones, get caught up in that, too. So I'll look to see if colleagues want any of that different. Counsel Lehman?
Can we call the votes separate, A and B separately?
Yes, we certainly can call A and B separately. Let me just double-check on making sure we divide this properly. Okay. I just want to provide a clarification for colleagues. If you want to make sure that this is clear, just look at the committee's report, 4.2. So it's just formatted a little bit odd. The committee's direction on A was the issuance of proclamations, including the ones that were before the committee, be referred to a future meeting of the committee. So that captures A, like the referral of the three proclamations that were before the committee, and future proclamations. So if you, for example, if you wanted to grant those proclamations, you need to defeat A, because it's a committee referral of those, like the committee is actually referring it. You can still have B, regardless of what happens to A, because it's a direction to review the current proclamations policy, including clarifying requests and reporting back to a future meeting, because the policy can be reviewed and clarifying requests for proclamations can be made by individuals, that sort of thing. That can all be done independent of A. So there's the referral of the piece, and then there's the other pieces. So we can vote on them separately, but I just want colleagues to be clear, A will include the referral of the three that were before the committee, as well as any future ones. B is the direction to review the policy. So hopefully, that's clear for everybody. Okay? So I'll ask the chair if we can deal with them separately. We can do A first, which is the referral, and then we can do B after. But we can have, we can have a discussion on the whole thing, if colleagues want. Go ahead, Chair.
Okay. So I'll put item 10A on the floor.
Okay. So this is the referral piece. Okay. Counsel Lehman, maybe we'll just deal with them separately and speak separately to them, because people might have different opinions. I'm not gonna try to match this together. So the only thing on the floor is the 4.2A piece, which is the referral piece.
Okay, Chair. I'm gonna, I apologize, I'm gonna touch on the review a bit, in that I support the review, of course. I did support proclamation, proclamations in the beginning, and we looked at that in the last council. But I don't support the referral. And here's why. You know, these proclamations have been in the works for a while now. People have put good faith work into getting them to this point here, to arbitrarily just say, well, we're gonna, now's the time, we're gonna review, and those ones before us, well, we're gonna put those on hold to the review. I think we have a process in place. We should stick to it for those that are in the pipeline. And if we want to review it, which I support that direction as well, for sure, by all means, do it. But let's not impede those that are already operating under the rules that we have set.
Other speakers? Go ahead, Counsel McAllister.
Thank you. Through the chair. And just for council's awareness, none of these were pending in terms of the dates that they were requesting. We did acknowledge at committee that all of these are down the road. I believe fall is the earliest one. So there is ample time to review these.
Any other speakers to this? Okay. So this is just on part A, the referral? We'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 10 to 4.
I will put 10B on the floor.
And on 10B, any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open 10B for voting. Yeah, this, that just needs to be fixed, because we've already dealt with pieces of it. So we're just gonna, we're just gonna redo the vote on part B without the reference to the three proclamations in it, because these were dealt with in the part about A.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 1.
Thank you, and through the chair, that concludes the 10th Report, Corporate Services.
So now we're on to added reports. There's the report of council in closed session. Counsel Lehman's going to make the report on that.
No. I'll report on the 11th Report of Council in Closed Session. Progress was made with respect to items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4, as noted on the public agenda, 3.110 SPPC, 5.110 CSC, 6.110 CSC, and 6.19 PEC.
Okay. Thanks. That's just a note of progress. 9.2 is an added. Okay, thanks. That's just a note of progress. 9.2 is an added report. It's a special report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Just has one item, disclosures of interest, since it was an in-camera session for that one. So I'll have Counselor Lehman present that report.
So I'll present the ninth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Just being aware that there was no community interest were disclosed, and we went in camera.
Okay, I don't imagine there'd be debate on just the disclosures piece, so, but I gotta ask. So there aren't any? Okay, good. So we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thus ends the ninth report.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. The next item is deferred matters. We have none. Inquiries, any inquiries? Counselor Pelosi, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I believe this inquiry, as checked with the clerk, is, could be an inquiry under section S. 18.1. Apologies, I would normally let you know as Chair ahead of time about my inquiry. Just taking some of this time to also look through some emails. And the 2024 final property tax billing has gone out to Londoners via Canada Post as of May 31, and I had a couple questions pertaining to that.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. There might be multiple people who wish to speak to this one, either staff or yourself, that for councillors who haven't opened it yet, there is an attachment that for the first time ever, the mayor's office has done a separate insert into the property tax billing. My question, either to staff or yourself, would, asking if your office absorbed the printing costs of your special insert, if your office covered any of the Canada Post fees with it. And then I'll have one follow-up after that, for sure.
Yeah, happy to answer that, and then I'll let staff answer. So my office did cover the printing costs for that insert. There were no additional Canada Post costs. We kept the, we kept the insert under the weight limit that was prescribed by the regular Canada Post fees. So I can answer that one. I don't know if you want staff to confirm that or not.
No, I'll trust you on that one. My second follow-up question would be for anyone who has, realize we haven't seen it in the mail yet, that the front side absolutely says what we're working on at council. I would raise the question that the backside was our traditional kind of like frequently-called numbers thing, but that councillors weren't highlighted as a council anywhere on your information, and the content information was your independent website versus the council website. So as a council, just feeling that we did the things on the front of it as a team for delivering on housing and other things, but we weren't mentioned anywhere on it.
Let me add, so the website that's used is my website that I use as mayor. It's all council-related content. The items that were profiled were all council-approved initiatives, and the format was pretty similar to the mailouts that, despite the fact that it is all council-approved content, similar to the mailouts that councillors do from the wards. Now, the only difference is, all members of council have the ability to send one free mailout at the corporation's expense. I don't have that ability. That's why I ended up paying for the printing costs. And it also wouldn't have gone to my entire constituency, it would have only gone to those who got property tax bills. So that's the answers to those.
Realizing this was the first time it was done, a question to you, if you would, of, we've found out now that it's already gone in the mail of just the process for decision-making, like can any member of council throw anything we want, as long as it doesn't change the weight limit into any mailout the city's doing? To your staff of just this process, relating, I don't believe this came through committee or council, it was just done.
So I don't have the answer to whether any member of council could put anything in any mailout. I'll say every member of council does have the ability to do a mailout to their entire constituency with, in, and paid for by the corporate budget, as per the council direction previously. The mayor's office does not have that ability, so we took a different approach. But I don't, I don't know about, can any member of council put any insert into anything being mailed out? I don't have the answer to that. That's a staff question.
Thank you, through the Chair. We don't have a specific council policy that outlines what can and cannot be included within. That's certainly something that if the council wishes us to have some greater authority over that, that's absolutely something that we could consider bringing forward in the future.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do recognize that last time at council, when we did change the policy to allow councillors one ward-wide mailout that didn't hit their budget line, that was not included for the mayor's office. I appreciate you trying to find a way to reach everyone. I'm certainly happy to work on a policy with this, recognizing that could be a great opportunity. But for me, it was really just wishing that it was the, all of council's work, and we were highlighted as a team somewhere in there. Thank you.
Sure, I, I'm not gonna add to that, because you're not asking a question, but I can certainly talk to you about the content afterwards. Okay, other inquiries, inquiries? Oh, Counselor Van Meurbergen, go ahead. Counselor, you gotta do that speaking kind of downward towards your microphone thing.
Okay, thanks. I've had numerous complaints across my ward about the inconsistency and actual outright lack of grass cutting on city property, including parks. I'd like to ask staff, I believe, to share that it should go to. Obviously, in years past, we've had to have the grass cut in spring, and so on and so forth. What would account for the increase in complaints and the rough start that we've had to this year? I've spoken to other councillors, and they've had similar outcomes in terms of the complaints that are coming from their wards. Perhaps we could have a fulsome explanation from staff. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and let me start this by saying that city staff are not happy with the state of our roadsides, parks, or sports fields either. My team takes a great deal of pride in maintaining these spaces for Londoners. We've had a bit of a perfect storm, pardon the weather pun, with respect to growing conditions. We had a very warm late fall last year, it was quite wet, so we went into the winter with long, fairly long grass. We had a fairly mild winter, so we didn't see full dormancy. And then we've had an incredibly perfect spring for growing grass and vegetation. Unfortunately, those fast-growing conditions for the vegetation have also come with a great deal of moisture, so we are having a lot of difficulty with doing the work. It takes a lot more time, it's a lot heavier and wetter, and there's a lot of locations we simply cannot get equipment into because of the level of saturated soils and mud. We are fully deployed. We have been since May, the beginning of May, when our seasonal staff start with us, and when our arenas staff come back from their winter assignment in the arenas. We have been authorizing overtime anytime the weather permits for us to do well. We'll continue to do those things. We're going to do another push on communications out to residents to let them know where we are and thank them for their patience, and we'll be providing an update to council this week, too.
Perhaps this is a follow-up, Mayor. I just want to state, is it fair to say that we are on top of it as we speak?
Your worship, we are as absolutely on top of it as we can be, given the weather conditions. Unfortunately, the forecast for the next 10 days is not going to be a great deal of help. It is a fair bit of rain, as well as some warm temperatures that will probably continue to struggle until we see some extended dry weather. But yes, we are fully deployed, we're using all the resources we have, thanks to our friends in Fleet who have been helping us keep everything out rolling and cutting, and we'll continue to make sure that's our top priority, is hopefully we all have some luck with some drier weather soon.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, okay. So any other inquiries? Nope, seeing none. Any emergent motions? Seeing none. Okay, we're on to bylaws. Given a number of questions colleagues might have had about the bylaws and votes, we're just gonna divide this in a way that hopefully will work for everybody. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna do all the bylaws with the exception of 188, which relates to the Wellington Gateway. 202, which is Wellington Gateway. 203, which is Wellington Gateway. And then I need to know if any colleagues want any other bylaws pulled separately. Counselor Trosaw, which ones? So 743 Wellington and 530 Oxford Street?
No, not 743.
Oh, okay.
530 Oxford Street, I'd like that.
530 Oxford Street.
And also college.
I don't think there's any bylaw associated with colleges before the tribunal. So, oh, is there? Oh, there's two associated with Oxford, but none associated with college. We're just gonna give a second to get these crystal clear. Okay, so we're gonna do kind of three bundles of votes. We're gonna do Wellington Gateway items, 188, 202, and 203. We're gonna do the Oxford Street item that Counselor Trosaw wanted separate, which includes 186 and 206, but we'll do them together. And then we'll do everything else after that. Okay? Great. So, only because it's set up this way and for speed, we're gonna do everything except the ones that we're pulling. So everything except the Wellington Gateway and the Oxford Street items. Okay, so I'll look for a mover and a seconder for all of those. Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll open first reading of those items for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, I'll look for a mover and a seconder for second reading. Counselor Prible, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Any discussion on second reading? I have a comment. I'll just hand the Chair over to the Deputy Mayor.
I will take the Chair, and I recognize Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment about Bill 171, because I think it's often easy to have appointments go through the bylaws where there aren't motions through committees, but recognizing staff members being appointed to critical positions are important. And so, and I know he's in the gallery, and Tim Smuck is here, and if you refer to bylaw 171, it appoints him as an administrator pursuant to the Ontario Works Act to oversee the work that we do as the service provider for Ontario Works. Really important position, critical to many members of our community receiving those important services. And I wanted to take a moment to, pending the results of the council vote, of course, to congratulate Mr. Smuck, not only for joining the London team, I know you are well-known in the community for your work with Changing Ways, and before that, with the Housing Corporation and others. So thank you for choosing to join the London team, and also congratulations on your appointment to this important position within this division, serving many Londoners who are in critical need of Ontario Works supports and services. So I just wanted to add those comments for colleagues to share, and just make that recognition today. And thank you for coming today to sit through the meeting and listen to this. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm gonna return the Chair to you, noting I have no other speakers on the list.
Great, okay. With no other speakers on the list, we'll open this second reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
And mover and seconder for third reading. Counselor Cuddy, Counselor Ramon will open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, so the next that we'll do is the Wellington Gateway ones, 188, 202, and 203. A mover for those. Counselor Ramon, seconded by Counselor Ferreira, will open first reading for those items for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, and mover and seconder for second reading. Counselor Cuddy, Counselor McAllister, any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Mover and seconder for a third reading. Moved by Counselor Prible, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, next are the items Counselor Trosaw asked for separate, 186 and 206. I'll look for a mover for those two items. Counselor Ramon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis, will open first reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, second reading. Second reading. Counselor Ramon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. Any comments on second reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
And third reading of these items. Moved by Counselor McAllister, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Okay, that concludes bylaws. The only thing left is adjournment. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Ferrera, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Will do that by hand. All those in favor of adjournment?
Motion carries.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.